A lot of being a claim against the insurance.
I always do.
It works in the other.
Hey, how are you?
Let's go. I'd like to call this work session for the Council of Billings Green Hills. The order, what color roll please?
Adams, Breeze.
Here.
Walter, here. Hermes. Walther, here. Walterman.
Here.
Merle.
Here. We have a forum. Thank goodness. The Mr. Hermes and Mr. Adams are excused. And we don't have a lot on the agenda, so I think I'm gonna give this to the manager and let her get started.
Okay, sounds great, thank you. I have just a few kind of housekeeping items. The first, the first involves our, the memorial bench program that the village has had for many years. And I can say it's very popular. But I, right now, I think a big goal of that program is to update our inventory of benches. I think it's been a number of years since that was last done. Also want to spend some time identifying new areas that are available for placement of our benches. And for example, I'm thinking about the new walking path that goes along Wynd Road. We have a lot of beautiful trees along there, locations for putting some benches. So, just, you know, an opportunity to kind of step back and...
You have another copy?
Sure do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. So, that's one, one piece that I wanted to let you know about, that program. And then, kind of going with that, I just passed out for you the...
That on trees.
Yeah, 'cause that's, that's a new, that's an alternative. Another option that we have now, through the Tree Advisory Board, they reviewed this first draft of guidelines to do a memorial tree program. This, the bench program is $600 per bench. The tree program, at this point, would be $500 per tree. And we don't have to review these guidelines, you can take a look at them right now. The Tree Board will be meeting again in...
I didn't get anything on benches. Was there a handout?
Oh, no, no. The handout was just on the manual program.
Okay, alright. I got some bench questions.
Okay, oh, alright, well, wait a minute.
When, when the time is appropriate.
Okay.
Before we do trees. Now, is there a written document on the bench program?
Yes, there is.
Okay. And will you get a copy of that?
I, I can do that.
Okay.
Sure. I'm, I'm changing now a little bit too, just to have, I'm sorry. Guys probably knew this program better than me. It's probably been a long time though, since you've seen the sheet that went with it. So, I will make you copy that as well as the updated, which is saying, it's just more, it's updated. So, I'll get your copies of that.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
So, and this program is very much, you'll see, very similar kinds of clauses in terms of the policies for the program. But again, it's a first draft of guidelines out of the Tree Advisory Board. And the next piece that I, we're gonna be working on is identifying the areas for plantings of trees. It's, it's not gonna be like a random, nor will be a street tree kind of program. It'll be more towards our green spaces, parks, that kind of thing.
Will it affect the new tree that was planted by the playground dedication and kind of things as well?
Um, well, it won't affect that. There won't be that kind of thing.
Okay. I just didn't know because we're looking to have a plaque there for the person that donated towards it.
Yes. Okay, and that's the other thing. And I, the, the Tree Board hasn't had the opportunity to look at the different scenarios that we have on a tree plaque. But I pulled a lot of information on, on tree plaques. You know, bronze plaques are in the hundreds. I found a very reasonable one for, it's $68. It's an aluminum plaque on, on a stake. Anyway, what we hope to be able to do with the program is have a, a standard plaque that can be purchased if the person, if that's what they want to do, purchase a plaque to go along with the memorial tree, so...
You know, you might want to talk to the Park District because they've got, that the same kind of thing they've got. They're, they're smallish plaques, so you can't read them from a long way away, but if you get up close.
Another thing that I consider too, is I know that a number of bridges, they have had pride the plaque off to take it to metal recycling places. So, something to consider is metal becomes more of a target if there's, you know, an alternative or something that might be less...
These trucks with the high side were starting to ride into each other around there.
Yeah.
Saw three of them away there today.
Yvonne, two things.
Yes.
The Glenview Garden also has a program like that.
Right.
And second, what is the Tree Board meeting? It's Friday, the 26th. And...
I, I asked a bench question.
What?
I believe that about four, maybe five years ago, there was an Eagle Scout project that involved an inventory of the benches that might be helpful as a starting place as to where the benches are and...
Right. And we do have that inventory, so I think that needs to be updated.
Yeah, and I know that some benches have moved from those places to other places.
And the Design Education Committee, I know there's been extensive, there was on inventory recent that we should, that we should do. I think it's an area, a good thing that we should talk about. One of the current things I already mentioned to you, Yvonne, was the, the new benches, they're starting to paint the cement.
I've checked on it for you.
It's white all over. Well, okay, that helps because one concern I had, although I don't think it's for me personally as authentic to the original. But my concern was if it was chipping off, then what's it look like in a year or two years? But it, it's a program that people are donating love. But I'm not sure what kind of sustainable action we have, other than getting more and more and more and more benches. How do we, how do we manage that? Do we have like a period of time and then a certain batch fall off? Or are we going to be destined to have hundreds and hundreds?
If I could comment on that, my, my thought on the management is to have identified areas. Until we can identify, you know, once those fill up, until we can identify other areas that would be practical for benches.
So, in other words, once we reach a saturation point that we haven't already, would we, there be somebody waiting in the wings? I don't know. I, I think, I think it's really worth talking about.
Yeah, I think we need to dive into this a little more. My recollection is, and it could be way wrong, there's about 135 benches in town.
How many are there?
There were 134 plus the new ones that we've sold this year.
Okay, so, um, recollection may have that.
Is this something, Mr. Eric, is this something we can put on the agenda for the council meeting to talk about? Or has it worked?
Well, I mean, if there's action you want to take or if the idea is you just want to...
Does that have some time?
Repair it. We certainly can.
Or, or maybe it is for a working session. I would have been, you know, if it was on the agenda, I would have been more prepared to...
Well, it's, we can, we can talk about it in the session.
Yeah, and my other concern is, is the ongoing maintenance of, you know, I'm always a proponent of, if you buy something, we always said in my house, if we can't afford to have it repaired, we can't afford to have it repaired. Because I may not be able to repair it. The benches, you know, like, there are some that look pretty rough. And I don't know how many benches I've painted in the last 10 years. But it's an ongoing maintenance issue. I, I think part of our overall scheme with benches has to address the ongoing maintenance.
I agree. And, and it's also my look at the trees. Oh, and another option will, you know, give more options. That way, the way doesn't have to be so...
Ben Ray's point also, the fact that there's a lot of baby boomers. And in fact, location of benches might be critical. As a matter of fact, I think a relative, relative viability was going, planning to buy a bench because the particular path that people likes to walk, he doesn't have one. And he needs to rest every so often. And you have a club all in one place. And, and it was brought up to the Rec Commission two years ago about that as well. When we put the new sidewalk on Wynton between Cromwell and Damon and so forth. So, the only rest places are the, the bus benches there.
There, there's a couple of benches over there on that new sidewalk.
Really? Because I wonder if...
And I saw it today.
Oh, because the ones I saw were, were the ones from...
There's one south, there's at least one or two south of Anover, and they were there at 5:45.
Well, yeah, south, no, south, yes, what I'm saying, on that stretch was, as far as I remember.
Are there any on the new stretch?
I, I don't think there's any.
I considered, yeah, south of Vanderpoel.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm talking about the whole new stretch and there, and there's only the bus. Only the bus stops. Right, so...
So, my, my recommendation is that, and I'm finding that it gives us a working, a meeting topic, but I'd like to bring the stuff we have from our committee and, and put all those components together and just have a...
Well, why don't we put that on the agenda for next, for the August work session? Give it time to put all the things together.
On the August work session, you said?
Okay, ready to move on? Couple of things, let me mention code violation letters. You know, one of the most frequent heights of calls we get regard, are regards to garbage cans. Garbage cans either without lids, set out too early, not taken back, what probably stored during, you know, the garbage collection times. So, we have started a concerted effort, just randomly each week. There was drives being made and donations made, times and dates of when there are violations. And I want to share with you the letter, and in case you start receiving calls from individuals who are receiving it, I want you to know firsthand what they're, what they are receiving. It's pretty basic letter, just states that on, on a certain date, at a certain time, the following model implications of the village's garbage ordinance was observed. Points out that there are penalties for non-compliance. And the main sections are the containers, the set out, set back. I happen to have given you a copy of one that went out for sale, but it's been sitting on Anover for a while. Depositing waste on public or private property, as when people are putting it out in the curb ahead of time. Could be other things as well. And then the container storage. And what I did is I took the time to add in there our new requirements in the zoning code for the, what they can be using to hide their storage containers. I'm also working on a short article for the Journal that even gives them some suggestions on where the cost for that kind of screen is relatively inexpensive. And then two, each of those letters is attached, the full section of the wording of these codes. So, they have that, and I highlight that as well, so they can see what their violation is. So, just wanted you to be aware that, that we are doing now, the running basis now.
Can you give me a feel for how many letters were there?
Twenty-five the first week, and pray that happens maybe the next week. You know, we do, every now and then, there's gonna be that person who, that was the only time they put their garbage cans out. And then, you know what, they don't have anything to worry about. They, it's only if they're repetitive and, you know, sorry about that. But it's, yeah, it's only a habit that they're likely to be caught again.
And Yvonne, just to make clear, on the bottom line, when you said the fence shall not exceed 4.5, uh, feet, those are, the ones that are already had and though, they're going to be, okay. It's just the new ones.
Correct.
So, as long as you had it, you're not going to get a, a control, that you pick it for that reason.
Right.
Okay.
No, these are, these are ones that were strictly like sitting out in front of a garbage or, excuse me, sitting out in front of a garage or just sitting in a front yard.
Okay, but those that have already had a fence done, if they have photographed the proof that it was before the zoning, then they're okay.
Right, they're fine. Yeah, no, we're not, it's green.
Okay.
Happy. Okay. Okay, so I really just wanted to make you aware of that. Another, actually, this is on a really positive note. Regarding Spoils Field, we have, over the years, talked about the second, need for a second field up there, which I believe is the original reason why the village leased a portion of that property from the Park District. We have been letting soccer use temporarily. I, it hasn't been a lot of usage, but some. So, I will want to notify them that of this change, but we would really like to go ahead and start moving on that second field. We have some opportunities to start with the grading and, and, you know, the technical terms of cutting in a ball field. But I believe, we, we believe that if we can get this going now, people are scheduling now for next year, that we will have really good usage on that, on that particular field, so...
Is there a cost associated?
Well, that's the next piece I added. Well, Mike and I will work on a, a business plan to, or prepare that and provide it to council so you can see what we do with the return of the earths.
I had a question, on this spoils field, do we own that land?
Most of it. Some of it is leased, longer, longer lease is...
We have, we have, we have some land the Park District.
For the Park District?
Yeah, they've got, they have some land they lease from us, we have some land they lease from us.
I think it's second block, isn't it?
And none of that is from Forest Park, though?
It's all located in Forest Park, but it's not...
But it's not?
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Another question is, will that baseball field or softball field overlap soccer field? And does that pose a problem?
Um, but not, not any longer, once it...
It'll eliminate the soccer.
Okay. So, there won't be soccer over there? I just wondered if this is...
There's not much, there's not much use apparently.
Oh, okay.
Is it a practice facility?
There's some practice and that's all.
Does this project include fixing the ceiling?
We're, we're gonna work on that a little prior basis.
And, and, sorry, one other follow-up question. When, is it because of timing where it eliminates the soccer? Or there's just hardly any use of it from the soccer stadium or...
Um, probably both. You know, we need to start now, we need to make the commitment now and start the work, which if soccer, I don't think what it's gonna do until fall.
Because I'm not thinking so much now, it's in the future. I know, during construction, I understand you won't be using it for either softball or soccer.
Well, right, but no, it would eliminate it, because we would be moving forward with the field and hope, with the goal of having it ready in the spring for the teams to start playing.
Yeah, probably I'll let them know if it's possible to say compliance. I think there's plenty of potential.
Okay.
The soccer use, is that Green Hills say soccer, or is it...
I think it's say.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's been...
Jason.
Jason Colby's.
The, the reason I bring it up is that I don't want to just, it might be the best decision for the community, and we should go ahead and receive that. I just didn't want it after they didn't exist.
Oh, no, not, not at all. Right. I, you know, I just certainly didn't want to be informing them that we're gonna do it without getting told to, you know, my intention to go ahead and...
Sure, but it's a, it's a money maker.
But it is.
I understand that.
In terms of the soccer, I don't think the impression that there's any use there at all.
Okay.
On the soccer. And, and again, we told them, it was since I was here, and they were told that that would be temporary until we were ready to move on the...
So, there's been communication about it?
Ready to move on that.
Okay.
I don't think it's really been big enough for a full-size field back then.
Good softball field?
No.
Oh, soccer. Right, yeah.
Figureable, sure, it's nice.
Okay. Also want to mention a couple of things on a, in terms of recreation. There, we talked about ribbon cutting for the, they'll, they'll be bound to see it yet, but it's gorgeous. It's great, yeah. So, I am thinking about August 9th, it's a Friday, to set up a ribbon cutting ceremony for that.
And on that topic, we were walking the dog and coming around the corner, and there was a couple of people, um, people hanging out at the dugouts. And I know that both, there's two dugout lanes that have been burned and charred. They scrambled away when we were coming that way. I don't know if they were actually doing anything or not. I don't know if there's a way to keep a little extra attention over on that area with the playground there, and just mention it to the police chief. And I would encourage any, you know, any residents that live by there to keep an eye out. We just, we want to make it a safe and comfortable place for families that live with kids. And, you know, charred dugouts does not make me feel...
I'm also concerned with the new park. I'm concerned with the, the new park and, you know, how...
Which, which...
Being surveyed, regent and the playground, yeah.
Yeah, as a security guard.
Because just as I'm saying that it's close at dusk, it doesn't necessarily going to keep the people off.
Right. And one thing is, more activity over there will make it less attractive for someone to hang out. You know, because they don't want to hang out with five, seven-year-olds or one and a half, so...
What times?
I hadn't said that yet, what's happening for everybody? Like a daytime thing, or...
I love the new playground, but I'm not, yeah, I'm not too, I'm finding it hard here.
I could do more like...
I would say, well, if they're leaving, so, yeah, like...
Like someone coming after work.
Say something like that, I would say, people coming from work, otherwise...
Plus the heat of the day.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would, I would do it, it's, it's...
Or, hey, an alternative, doing it Saturday before the parade, after the parade, where there's a lot of...
Oh, that might be nice. That would be nice.
And, and then you wouldn't conflict with that.
Yeah, so... I'll give you something to...
Okay.
That was good.
All right. Okay, maybe right after, I mean, I'm reading...
What's the typical time frame for 3:00?
I'm doing 10:30.
Wait, not at 10:30?
Hour and a half, you know.
Yeah.
You could call it 12:30 and...
Yeah. 12:30, yeah.
Can you contact the Journal so that they...
And also the, the Hilltop Journal.
Are you glad that there are two people missing and there's two less people shouting at you? Questions?
I have a question.
Ma'am.
What's the date of the parade?
August 10th, yeah. August 10th.
Did they pick a time?
August 10th.
10:30, please?
12:30 is the...
August 10th is the party.
10:30 is the parade?
Yeah.
12:30 was even... Okay, what do you?
I, I, how do you call out the parade and...
Yeah. Okay, and the last thing I told minutes I would mention tonight, and they are rescheduling a recreation meeting for Thursday, July 25th at 7:30.
Is that the one from the 18th that's being moved?
Correct.
Okay.
25th?
Yes, Thursday, July 25th, 7:30.
Yeah, that's what I got.
He saw those emails.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, let's see, I think that's...
Okay. What's our, on our legislative agenda for August?
Well, I'm hoping for a couple of projects, but I'm not totally sure about that. The Malloy's parking lot and...
Oh, so you're waiting for this to come down?
Right. There it is. And then I know we have some, the, no, maybe we do have legislation. It's got to be, I have one of our, the PUD, the PUD. Right, yeah. I didn't mention, I think at the Land Work Session about the planning, if you don't want to be talking on that behalf, we have approved, or it's not, it was already approved by council, but so we have a recording, the council needs to pass some legislation, so...
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Ma'am.
On the last summer's committee, we have been studying a possible amendment. We met on July the 8th for the zoning. We met on July the 8th. We're going to re-meet again on the 29th to some, to study some data. Just wanted to give you ahead of time what we're talking about.
Okay.
And it might be one percent. And I have written the new amendment, the current as it reads and the reasons for the change. And we have been discussing that with Mr. Walter, and I had the meeting on July the 8th. Mr. Yvonne Carter came in, and we're going to collect some more data on the 29th for, for that. And we might have it ready for our meeting in August.
Okay, well, any change would have to go to planning condition?
Correct, but I still that I have to bring it to you first, or to council first. And we work it from the committee.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just came across the article on the street sign changeover that I'll be showing you guys. It's interesting, there's a, a little bit of a pushback. I don't know if they're all gonna change. You know, I think it's doing that. But we, I think we need to get, maybe you noticed already, more into the details. I know that it's the reflective aspect, but one of the things I was concerned about is if there's a breakaway feature or them restricting diameters. And as we make that decision, where to go from here. Some interesting things where they have sold the old signs in some places as they transition over just to offset the cost. But I, I thought, I thought it's worth us, you know, being a little more educated on what's about to happen here.
No, I think it's great.
And then, another thing is, there's, Cincy Magazine has rating, Rating the Burbs. And it's something you can look at online, just Google Cincy Magazine, Rating the Burbs, and B R B S. Interesting, and my question is, you know, from a community development standpoint, is what can we be doing? And I know we ask it often, but we need to keep asking and addressing it. But what can we be doing to make this the ultimate place to be? And, and by looking at their standards and what their, their claims are for certain, like Glendale's on the list and, you know, certain, certain places that are on there. At least by reading through those, we can have some vision of where we would like to go and what we might want and what we might want to just ignore as, as far as criteria goes. But I'll pass, pass it on to you.
All right, Mr. Walter?
Two things, so, we had a party Friday at the shelter around, for my grandson. And when we got there, all four garbage cans were full. So, I, I carried them up to the dumpster. Do we have any, is there, are we supposed to be doing anything with the garbage in this area? How's that get taken care of?
You know, actually, we did have a process, and somebody dropped the ball when we called it dumpster last. But, yes, a employee at the pool is responsible for checking the shelter and clearing that. And it, it did not happen, so...
Okay, well, I emptied them, but it was, when we got there, we're trying to set, set everything up and found the garbage cans full. It was no big deal at dumpster right there, but for me, it wasn't a big deal. If somebody else had read it, it might be a big deal. And the other thing I noticed is, I didn't think we had power first. Turned out to be just the TFI that you said. But when I went over and checked the switches, we get these rickety quarter-inch plywood doors ready to fall off and all the electrical service for that whole area. Behind these doors, unsecured disconnects, records, panels, all that kind of stuff. Seems to me that's a dangerous situation. Anybody ever pointed?
Um, yeah, and, and as a matter of fact, we... Those are kind of an ongoing issue for us.
Go ahead.
Right. So, yeah, we need to...
Somebody's already getting in there, turning them off or...
Um, thankfully, they don't turn them off, but they do get open when they're locked. So, we do need to do something, we'll do more specific.
So, they're not, they're not locking key, kind of thing?
Uh, no, well, they may have it in the past.
Tell you what, even if they're locked, a swift kick in the road would...
Right, exactly.
One of them would be going to the entrance.
My apartment needs an egg, I'd like it.
Anything else? Well, hearing nothing. Oh, are we talking to everybody? I'm talking to everybody. Anything else? I have a couple of things.
Speak up before I whack the gavel.
Don't whack the gavel, I'll, I'll speak quickly. Uh, September meeting, I'm asking to be excused, I will not be here for the regular session. I think we ought to take a look at sometime in the future, considering, consider moving our meeting night to the second, fourth, from the first to the third. And one, there's a couple of reasons. One reason is, we never have financial information for the council meeting because it's, you know, on the second, third, fourth of the month, and... and we just don't get information. And it just, it makes our financial information stale when we're making decisions about financial things. So that, that's one reason. And then instances where we have to have something done by the first of the month, we have to have a special session, it actually gives us another week. So that's in rules of council, I'm not saying we, it's something that's imminent, that we need to do something about immediately, but I think it's something that we ought to consider sometime in the future. I've heard some comments about the sign ordinance and the Green Hills creamy whip. I'm not looking to start World War III. I know it's a very successful business, but, you know, I have residents come up to me and say, why are you picking on a successful business? And then I have residents come up to me and say, the shopping center council or, or village administration doesn't fairly and equitably enforce the building and zoning codes. And I think from what I'm seeing, and correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have any, we have a sign there. It meets the definition of a sign, and there was no application for a sign permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we've asked them to take it down and go through the correct process.
Well, it is a violation, so when we spotted the violation, they were forced to take it down. Next thing, we had a request for an appeal, but there's, there was no decision rendered, because no zoning determination was sought in the first place, so you have to...
Can't appeal something that...
Right, you have to have the decision before you can repeal. But, you know, I, I know there's the argument that, well, it's not a sign, but it, it is a sign by the definition in our code, which says a visual representation.
Yeah, well, it, it sounds like the process needs to be adhered to.
Right.
And we want all our businesses to be successful, we want them to advertise, we want them to follow the government. And am I correct that the new sign, where the Johnny's Toys sign was, it was a permit, and they followed the correct procedure?
Correct.
It was prior to the passing of the New Zealand Code. I'm not sure it would be what it is to...
But, but still, they followed the process.
Right, at the time, yeah.
Yes, that's, okay, thank you. I had a comment from a citizen on drainage on the west side of Wynton Road when it rains hard like it did over July fourth weekend. And puddling on the, on Wynton Road that made it dangerous.
But, but Compton, the usual?
Where?
In Cromwell.
Near Cromwell, yeah.
Right, right. That, yeah.
And then there's...
And I, I just wanted to pass that on to you. I, I can't confirm that that's an issue, I don't know whether there's...
It is, of course, that, that rainfall was substantial, so perhaps our media, if it's ever that flood, it would be put up some barricades, but it's, hopefully, our pipe's taking a while.
Okay.
It was brotherly problems with that, weren't there?
Right.
Was that supposed to be fixed, or...
Uh, not totally, but that is something that we have to do when we do that portion of... No, no, no.
Okay.
We had to know why, so...
Yeah, a lot of those same ones, there, there's that hole at Gaimbeer and being room inferior.
Right.
So I'm just concerned at one point, it's going to be tire-sized.
And then the last item I have, it, in the, I, I'm still trying to digest this. In the state budget, there is a change, and I, I don't have this right, I will have it correct for the August meeting. In the past, if we passed a tax levy, there was a rollback portion that was picked up by the state that they filled in a portion of the tax. They are no...
Twelve and a half percent rollback, yeah.
Right. They are no longer going to do that on new tax issues going forward. Or if you change the language in it, if you re-up that levy, and re-up's not the right word.
Renew.
Renew. If you renew it exactly as is, they will continue to do that. We don't have any tax levies upcoming. I'm not aware of any that we are considering, and I would think I would know that. But it is something for future councils to keep in mind that the amount that will be paid be borne by the individual property owners is going to be a hundred percent. It won't be a reduced amount because of office or state. So just a little word to advise on that. Yeah, it's more of, we will pass the burden down rather than take the cut. We have no word to pass it down, so we'll take the cut. And that is all.
I have an add-on to the Johnny's Toys sign that has changed. I stopped and asked the sign company what they were doing with the letters. I don't know, they, I wondered if they were throwing them out, recycling, whatever. It sounds like Grandview has those, they ask for them, and they have them. I don't know if there is an advantage, or if there's interest to have a set of those historical society, or whoever, or maybe there's no interest whatsoever, but I know that's been a part of the literature a while. There might be a purpose or plan.
Well, they're, they're private property now, we can talk about it when somebody wants...
Right, I'm, you know, it's obviously that, but there's also a sign museum that's down in Spring Grove.
Yeah, well, the sign, the, the letters are...
Well, actually, there's some pretty strange things at the sign museum, so...
Yeah, that's true. It is a cool place, that.
The, the thing I've thought about is, it's better to ask the question now than go, oh, whatever happened to that?
Check his gums.
Put it right across here.
Anything else? I would entertain a bunch of adjournments at this point. No objections, stand adjourned.